So first, I wanted to note that this meeting is being recorded. And so I'm going to open the meeting at 7:05. And if we I suppose we could start with those minutes and get them out of the way. So somebody want to do the minutes or?
Yeah, I now I have to pull up the
Oh, you know what? I don't know if we have motions. I apologize. I can make
I can just
Debbie was out today.
Make the motion to accept the minutes as written from the
Yeah, I have to say the date, the minutes. Move to accept the minutes of 11/1, I mean, 11/18/2025 as printed as written. Is that okay?
Do you need me to say it again, or was that?
No, that's okay. You just say so moved.
Yeah, so I
Okay.
So moved.
Yeah, there, yeah, there we go. So I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have to roll call?
Because we're on Zoom, yes.
Yeah, okay. Jeff?
Aye.
And Dave?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye also, so that's four in favor, no opposed. John's not with us tonight so far. Okay, so 70 Main Streets, 70 Main Street. A special permit because, see, we have to wait till 7:30 for that though, huh?
We do. We can do updates. We don't have any ZBAs.
Yeah. Now about planning administrator updates?
Sure.
I saw them moving some machines in up the street, up at up at up the hill here. Which road, I don't know which road that is that they're moving into.
Um.
Looks like they're gonna get started doing some work up there though.
On which street?
On Charles Street Extension, I mean, Charles Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. I'm actually not sure.
It's, I know it's Amber Road, but it's gonna be wrong.
Oh, you're talking about the Amber Road. Okay, okay. Um, so they shouldn't really be starting their official work yet. There might be some clearing and grubbing they can do, but we haven't had the preconstruction meeting yet, so I think I will check in with them just to be sure that they don't go too far with beginning.
Yeah, I just saw them moving some of the big machines in, so.
Okay, okay.
So I figured I'd make sure they were ready to, actually ready to do something there, you know?
Was on Amber Road, Warren, up to the right as you look up the hill?
Yeah, yeah. They went in that way, I mean, because they don't have their other entrances developed yet, so.
Yeah, I saw him over there too. I was kind of wondering what's up with that.
Yeah, well, I figured I'd bring that up to Danielle so she can make a look, make sure all their ducks are in a row and everything, you know, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, they still have to do a preconstruction meeting. We have to do the plan endorsement. We have to get their street opening, so they shouldn't be working, working, but they can do a little bit of clearing, so I will, I'll reach out, check in with them.
Yeah, they may be getting a little anxious.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out.
Yeah, well, it's a big project and it's got a lot of stuff to it, so I mean, I can understand them, you know, wanting to get a leg up on it if they possibly can, as long as they do it legitimately, I suppose that's okay.
Yeah.
They've put a lot of time and effort into that project, so. Do you have any updates on any of our other situations here, so?
Yes, the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of applying for a complete streets grant for the January round for the Charles Street sidewalk, but I spoke with the DPW Director, Finance Director and the TA, and that's a million dollar reimbursement grant. And the town doesn't have the cash flow right now to be able to do that. And also, we have a capital request in to cover the non-covered expenses, and that money wouldn't be available till July. So unfortunately, we're gonna have to wait till October to apply for the Safe Roots to School program, or January again, to apply for complete streets, but we're not able to make the application right now. But we would be prepared, as long as we get the capital funds, we'd be prepared, we'd have the police detail money, we would have other construction management and final design in hand.
Do we have to matching numbers for that first million there?
Um, it's, I think the amount that DPW requested is 200,000, and that would cover everything, the completion of the design, finishing the environmental permitting, construction management, police detail. But we have to have that secured before we can be awarded a complete streets grant.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
That was Central Street, right?
Yes. Yes. And I'm still going through the survey results. I think I, it might make sense for me to give a more detailed report of that at our next meeting, only because I'm still kind of parsing through. It'd be easier if we had a GIS person right now, but we don't. I'm kind of trying to sort out who has said they are in favor, who has said they're opposed, opposed, and where they live and whose properties are impacted, so I'd like to be able to give a pretty clear picture of that. So, pretty preliminary, but I did make a mistake when I was answering your question last time, when you asked how many it was mailed to. It wasn't 65, it was 165 if it was mailed to. And we've had about that many people respond, not all of them, the ones it was mailed to, but many of the people it was mailed to, plus a lot of other people from elsewhere in town, so it's really a combination of people who live on Central Street, right around it, and elsewhere in town, kind of.
Well, I would think that any of this connecting streets to Central Street, like Spruce Road and so forth, would be, they'd be impacted because they could walk down the end of the street and then take the sidewalk right down to the park.
We had a lot of people respond from Winterberry, Spruce, a lot of the streets in the surrounding area.
Right, right. Oakville, all those streets. That's actually a lot, that's, it's relaxing, there's a lot of houses and a lot of people that would, that would that would very likely use a sidewalk all the way down there, because it's not that long of a walk and, you know, to have easy access to it, because drive, you know, somebody walking down that street, there's not really a lot of place to walk, you know? So it's a little, a little tight.
Right. I put something in your course, in your folder, just as kind of miscellaneous correspondence. It's not on the agenda for discussion, because there's nothing going on with it right now, but I received a letter kind of out of the blue and was asked to pass it along to you, so I am. It has to do with the one and two Chester Road development. So I'm just passing it along. There's nothing new that's happening with that. It's not going to be under construction until the spring. It's just, I was asked to pass it along.
Well, I kind of read through it and I wondered, I mean, I mean, he seemed, seemed he seemed to indicate, Mr. Bird seemed to indicate that they didn't follow through when they did the, when they did the deeds and everything. They didn't put the restrictions on there and that I had put into the, that I put into the minutes.
I don't know, I mean, the approval was given in, I think, 2009? Nine? Um.
And then, and then the latest one was in 2000, it was in 2020, when they, when they changed, when they, because they were to put two houses in there, and then they decided, I think they had too many issues with wetlands and they couldn't really fit everything in, so
They reduced it.
They went back to only one house lot, so that's what they, that's what they're doing now. But in the process of making that change, I think they left a few things out, you know, because that, Hanson Road, which, which, which is like their driveway, because nothing else was actually gonna be addressed Hanson Road, that's why they ended up with the Boroughs Road address.
Right, right. The assessor and the fire department discussed it and landed on.
Well, it was Chester Street, so they didn't want to confuse the two. So they kind of eliminated that by making everything a Boroughs Road address, and Mr. Bird is correct, it could be, he's 59, they could be 58 Boroughs Road, so it's not a problem of giving them an address.
Well, the assessor had said no to 58 because it's on the wrong side of the street. So, I mean, there are some restrictions that she has to follow with that.
So what, what did they, what did Debbie choose then?
61 rear boroughs, old and over.
Yeah.
So 61 R, right?
Yeah, old and over.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, old and over, yeah, sorry.
And was the, in the letter, he seemed to indicate that it, you know, it was getting a different address, so is this just recently been resolved, or?
No.
Or he was just misinformed, you know?
I don't know. I mean, this, that address was assigned, I want to say, four or five years ago now.
Yeah.
It was always intended to be.
Yeah, strange, isn't it?
It's, I don't know if he came across some older file. Things are still under, in some cases, there are still under one and two Chester in files, our files, conservation's files.
Yeah, we even say Chester, right? Even on this 2020, this May 2020 decision here, it says Chester.
Yeah, because it hadn't been changed yet, so I think.
Like as an identifier, if anything.
Right, right.
Yeah, I get, I get what you mean, so maybe that's caused confusion there.
It's possible that I, that it's possible the Conservation Commission, I think, might have been reviewing it recently because they had an expired order of condition, so maybe it came through that way. But I did check in with the assessor to be sure that that was gonna be its legal address that, that it was assigned to, so that she's aware.
Okay.
Yeah, when the change was made to only put one house there, I'm not sure that, I saw, I can't recall the plan exactly where they put the septic system on, and whether it's too close to the well for the others, because they went to what, they didn't bring, they're not bringing the water in anymore, no what, no, no phthalate hydrant and no water, which means everybody's got to do wells, so. Because originally, there was gonna be phthalate hydrant, and there was gonna be city, a town water up there, so. So since they're not doing that anymore now, they've got to be very careful about where the septic systems are, because limited amount of space there for them, you know, so, and for the wells, so.
But I imagine Bob's got that covered though, right? I mean, you're not gonna be digging a well or whatever without the Board of Health having review, right? Like where that location gets proximity to the other systems, I would think. I mean, it's a good concern to raise. I read that, I saw that in the letter, but.
I think the engineer needs to be contacted to make sure that he actually, that he, that he located the, they located everything and can prove that they have the distances required, so. I think that was one of the concerns that they, he wasn't making the distances, so. So but that could just be brought up to Bob and you can take a look at it. But yeah, so when they go to pull a permit for the well, you're right, they should make those, show those measurements are good. Yeah, so right now, they just gave that letter to us as a FYI thing?
Yes, and I'm wondering if it was prompted by the conservation filing, but I reached out to the the developer, and he said he doesn't intend to begin any work until the spring. So nothing really imminent for that right now.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of wetlands there, so. Even, even with the fact that there's some room there, there's still a tight squeeze to get it in without impacting the well, and so. So I'm sure that's why conservation is so deeply involved now.
Other updates, I'm working on hiring Debbie's position. She's not here tonight because she wasn't feeling well, but that we have had a lot of candidates, some very well-qualified candidates, so we'll be starting interviews next week. So I'll keep you posted on that. Try to get someone started in January.
Now, who's gonna, who does the interviewing? You and?
Me and Alison from HR.
Are you and Alison?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So we're autonomous. We don't have to, we don't need the TA or anybody. We just say, we like this person.
I think he'll be signing off on the, I mean, he signs off on the posting, the union signs off on the posting. I'm sure everybody will see it before the formal hire is, is made. I think he would sign off on that. It's different from my position, which I think is more autonomous. I think it is a little bit under somewhat. I'm never clear on how that works.
All right. But we got some good candidates though, huh?
We do. We have a lot of people apply, so.
We've had, we've had a couple of times where we've, even when we needed to fill these positions, we've had some really good candidates, you know?
Yeah.
I remember a couple of times it was, we had, we'd have three candidates and we'd like, we like them all, can we have all of them?
That's how I feel.
No, you can only have one, just pick one, and that was a really hard choice. Really hard choices, you know?
Other than that, it's kind of all the updates I have. Just kind of going into the holidays, we don't have any applications right now for our next meeting. I'll keep everybody up to date on that if something comes in. But it has been quiet as far as new applications go.
I do have a question about Charles Street though. They're not looking for acceptance, street acceptance, huh?
Um, are you talking about the Amber Road, Haverhill, Charles?
No, the Charles Street Extension.
They will eventually want to, but they're just.
It's been a long time.
It has been, how many years under construction? 13 years now.
They're gonna have to repave the road before they even ask for inspect for acceptance.
I think that's a possibility. That binder's been in for.
They're gonna wear it out, yeah.
Yeah. No, I do think that that's the ultimate goal, is to ask for street acceptance. But I haven't received anything on it yet. I mean, they're not done, but also, you know, as far as inquiries about what their requirements are, they'll have to give us street acceptance plan and street layout plan, all of that stuff, and that hasn't.
It's just been a long time, you know, and so I was wondering if we had heard anything from them, or?
I haven't. They haven't even asked about it. I know that Shea Lane is looking for street acceptance, and I'm, I think they're hoping to do that at the next town meeting, but I also haven't. That's what I think they want, but I haven't also received any of the plans. They have until March.
Yeah, so how about, well, you've got, you must have got some, you must have got some peer review inspections to know that the road is paved and everything, and somebody must have been out there for the final paving.
Um, yeah, definitely. I mean, the, the construction is fine, but I haven't received any of the plans. Like, we have to get a lot of documents in place before they can be on the warrant, so.
Yes, built and all that, certifications, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and they, we gotta make sure, in the past, they failed to put the water service locations on the plans. We gotta make sure they do that.
Okay. Make sure we have that.
Didn't, never really thought too much about it till one day somebody came and said, you realize that they never put water service? Then I'm like, how come they don't locate? They know where they are, they put them in, you know, but they don't locate them. Because they, this, this an afterthought. Well, I would like to make sure they're on the plans this time.
We'll have our engineer check for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they started doing it, but not, not without being encouraged, if you know what I mean. So hopefully, they keep doing it, because otherwise than that, the, the DPW guys have had, spent some time searching every now and then trying to find one, even on the newer subdivisions, you know, the ones that didn't have them located on the plans, so.
Right.
So. Okay.
And then other updates, 20 Elm Street, if anyone is following, their next hearing date is December 11th at 6:00, the Distance Learning Lab at High School. I will be attending that one. The peer reviewer, Eric Carlson, who we normally use from GM2, he has done their, their civil stormwater and their traffic peer review. So he went to their last meeting to talk about stormwater, and he'll be at this upcoming meeting to talk about traffic.
Yeah, I'm trying to go to that. Well, I didn't make the last one. I forget, I had a conflict of some kind, but.
I did too, but I'm going to the next one.
I think we talked about that. Neither one of us could go, so. But I'd like to go to the next one and, and see where they're at with the whole thing, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, we have little or no input.
But if there are comments, I mean, you certainly can give them.
Unless the Board of Appeals asked us for stuff, you know, to ask us for our opinion, then we can do that. But then they don't have to necessarily take it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're open for comments. I mean, I know that Kathy sent out the plans when they came in, if we have any input, I mean, I certainly can, can give it to them. I think our main input would be about stormwater and civil and traffic, and that is how, you know, I help, I am helping with that coordinating of the peer review, so that would probably be our main contribution, would be comments in, in that area. But if there's anything else, I can pass it along.
Right, right. Right, how many units are there? Are they gonna have 400 units? How many units?
200 are proposed.
Only 200?
Right.
Two buildings, right?
Yes.
It'll help a little bit with our, they're gonna be rental units there still?
Yes, which means the town would get credit for all 200 units, so that would put us over.
What's 40B, they have, what's, what's the timeframe? They have to keep them as rental units for a period of time?
I think they intend to do it forever. They're just building it this way.
In perpetuity?
Yeah, and to keep them affordable forever too, so.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not, that's, you know, much as a location, there's locations that we would probably prefer. It does add some affordable housing, reasonably affordable housing, I guess, hopefully to our community, so.
Sure.
Is there anything that's really affordable, Warren? Is there? Come on.
You can still get penny candy for a quarter.
Awesome. You know, it's crazy. Housing's crazy.
I don't know, have you seen your old Ryers store? Looks like he started fixing it up. I didn't talk to, I saw Mark the other day and I didn't ask him about it, but it looks like he's finally getting around to fixing it up and putting the doors back the way I remember them when I was 10 years old. And but I do exactly what I should see when I walk through their door and look to the left. Should be the glass case with the candy in it and everything, I just.
Yeah, I saw them over there too plugging away. They had a couple crews out there. I don't know if they were putting like heat pumps or something in or whatever.
Yeah, that was, that was quite the project, and he took off there to to save that building, and you know, and I think for a while there, it was a little more financially stressing than he had anticipated.
So is this the old, because I'm newer to the town, so is that the, the, the building that's behind Ryers?
The little building, the little building in the back, yeah, that used to be.
That was Ryers, you mean? I didn't know that.
Yeah, Molly's, if they called it at the time.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
But you know, Bill Ryer, it was paint Ryers when Bill Ryer took over running it.
Oh, okay.
When Molly ran, it was Molly's, that was it.
Looks done right now, doesn't it? I mean, like, whatever they did, they did the final push. It looks ready to move in in some respects.
Yeah, I think he was gonna try to make it like, kind of like a museum thing, you know, to, but I don't know what the current plan is, you know? So, but Jeff's, Jeff's, if they put the penny candy in Jeff's back there, so.
You see the Griffin van parked right out front.
Oh, cut it out, guys, cut it out.
Candy.
Don't worry, Jeff, I'll be right behind you.
Yeah, right? Oh no, I can't wait to see what happens over there.
But that's, it's a pretty little building. They did a nice job with it, you know?
Yeah, it does look good.
Yeah, he's a, he's a, he's a good builder. He certainly, he certainly is.
Yeah, that'd be a good little spot to put like an ice cream store or something, or.
Yeah.
Put some tables and some stuff out there and.
He'd be competing with himself out front there though.
Well, yeah, I suppose, that's true too.
I don't know what his plan, I'll, I'll see him in the next, I usually see him or his dad on church, so I mean, I'll I'll ask him what he, what the final, because it's been a while since I talked to him about it. I'll see what the, what the final plan is.
Yeah.
For that, what he's gonna do. Because it finally, for a long time, was looking a little decrepit, but now it looks like it's all spruced up, ready to rock and roll. So.
Come on up here. Hang on a second, you got a minute?
Sure.
Oh.
Hey, wait a minute, I'm gonna go get, hang on, I can go get my dog.
This is my chubbiest one.
Oh my god.
What a cutie.
Oh, what's this cutie's name?
Olby. Yeah, she's a corona, don't let her fool you. She'll rip your face off.
Little dogs are dangerous.
I'm at a safe distance.
Yeah, she's, she's a rescue.
Yeah.
She came from Houston.
Oh, yeah?
A lot of them do come from Texas.
Almost no fur. She's like bald. She doesn't like the cold.
And yeah, I can tell you from experience that Texas, it can get really hot.
Oh, yeah, she, I don't know.
With the basic training at Lackland Air Force Base in Texas, so believe me.
Oh, that's, yeah, it's hot down there. We were in Texas in, I went to a graduation down there in May, and it was like, brutal, at 7 o'clock in the morning, it's like 94 degrees outside.
Yeah.
That's gross. It's gross.
Well, you know, some people love that heat, you know?
Yeah, we rescued her from there. And she just does not like the cold weather, the snow.
So does that mean she's kind of second guessing the rescue?
Probably. I know it. I know. What are you kidding me? She's a princess.
And Bill, who's this little one?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
So this is Walter. He's got his, he's, he's got his old man eyebrows.
Yeah. He's a cute dog.
Cute.
All right. I had to put myself on mute because he's over here throwing the ball at me over and over again, trying to get me to play.
All right, next time I'm bringing my dog up.
There you go.
I get cats and rabbits.
Mine's kind of big. My dog's a lot bigger. She's a, when we, we rescued her from a particular, from a person who had, just couldn't take care of him, wanted to get rid of him, rid her. And she was, but she was only like six, seven months old when we got her. And we asked, what kind of a dog was she? She was jet black, you know? But she's, they said, oh, she's a Black Lab and Shepherd. I'm like, wow, okay. She had these little dots over her eyes. So we finally got the chip paperwork. Rottweiler Husky.
Rottweiler, yeah, I was gonna say, like, little dots over the eyes.
And she's got a lot of husky in her. Them huskies are intelligent dogs. This dog is smarter than she needs to be.
Just thank God dogs don't have thumbs, and that's all I'm gonna say.
They do a lot of damage. Do a lot of damage, ain't they?
All righty, we, we have 7:30, so we, let's see, take care of these guys and get everything moving along. It's good. So 70 Main Street, this says, continue public hearing. And we have a new plan. Has anybody seen the new plan and everything?
Yep.
Did you want to screen share anything, or Danielle, do you want to make presentation, or?
Um, I know the folks from Brunt Workwear are here. I can screen share if you'd like me to do that now. Hold on one minute while I get that set up.
Okay. I have it open as well.
Oh, okay.
Sure, too.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
I had the PDF, but it started to crash, so.
Okay. I can share.
If you can share, I'll just make sure you have permission to share.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm, I'm crashing off the website.
Um, I gave Dan permission to share.
All right, sweet.
So Dan, if that's, is that working for you?
Uh.
There you go. Okay.
Can everyone see the plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So I'll just go over the updates based on the feedback that we received from last meeting. Most of the comments pertaining to the site plan regarding the kind of site entry approach and how this is kind of used as a cut-through site over into the Walmart parking lot. We played around with a bunch of different options with the client as well as the landlord, and we've landed on this option that we're presenting tonight. As kind of a, to satisfy all parties, we feel like this is the best solution. Given the project schedule as well as kind of satisfying the need of eliminating that cut-through that people like to use, so we'll start at the front. We're adding in new crosswalk striping here, right at the entry to kind of connect up for these parking spaces here, which this will then connect up to the existing striping that's here, and then attachment to the sidewalk and into the entry point of the building. We're also adding a new pole-mounted sign. It'll be a yellow sign that will say slow speed bump to call that out. In this parking bay, we're gonna be adding new concrete wheel stops that are gonna be permanently fixed slash keyed into the pavement. The existing speed bumps will remain. We'll probably touch up the paint a little bit, just to make sure that that yellow paint is really vibrant, stands out. And this second row of bank or parking, we're also gonna be adding in wheel stops here just as a secondary measure for people that are driving this direction. We notice that most of the time, people are driving in and then cut around this way versus the other way, but we're throwing them in anyway, just to be safe. We're also adding in our crosswalk striping on this end, as well as a sign too. Since this side of the building did not have a concrete sidewalk extension somewhere to the front of the building, we're gonna be adding a concrete sidewalk extension here, which then will provide access from the crosswalks down into the existing crosswalk and then up and into the building.
Okay. What's the distance between the parking spots from the now, the, how much room is behind the, for somebody to back out?
The dry, drivelines here, the existing.
Should be about at least 22 feet, right?
Yeah, I can pull that, and since this is an architectural site plan, this was scaled, so it may be a little bit off accuracy-wise, but actually, that is not the right scale. I'll check here. It's three thirty seconds. Uh, that is right. So this one's 22, six and a quarter.
Okay.
And then this one here is a little bit further than that. It's 32 feet. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Up front is a little bit tighter here to that existing.
Now, what size, what size are those parking spots?
Right now.
Or are they 20 by 10 by 20s?
Right now, I believe they're, that one's eight, six by 16. Again, this is scaled, so maybe a little bit off, but um, we can get the exact site measurement, just uh, be safe.
They look like, they look like nine by 18s, not 10 by 20s, so.
Yeah.
Which is good for small cars, but not for trucks, so. So, okay. Normally, I think our basic requirements, correct me if I'm wrong, Danielle, but it was 10 by 20s, but with variance, the Board of Appeals gives variance for nine by 18s?
That's correct. So I, actually, I'm not sure if they were, if they have nine by 18s, then presumably the Board of Appeals gave them a variant.
I didn't think about it before, but I'm just sitting here looking at it and it looked a little, a little tight. That's all. But since they're pre-existing, there's no need for Board of Appeals or anything, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
Then I think the only other call out from the last meeting was ensuring that the existing landscaping, if there was going to be any replacement, that it would match the previously approved Joe Fish SPR number. Uh, Danielle sent that over. Uh, we've added this to the drawings. Uh, we're going to be sharing that SPR approved package with the contractors. So if any of the landscaping is damaged or dead, uh, it'll be replaced like the like.
Right. Now, just to go back to the parking for a minute, does the other, are you repainting any of those stripes or are they all good?
Right now, they're a little dull. Um, the plan is that it will be restripped.
Okay, alright.
What's the distance?
Yeah, I think we have more than adequate parking here. I mean, you know.
Yeah, where, so the, the total parking right now, we are looking at 86 total spaces. Uh, the required per the regulations are 18.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Having said, having said that, I mean, I wouldn't, wouldn't make this a requirement, but if you, if it was possible on those upper parking lot, parking spots, the ones up the top there.
Yeah.
If those could be 10 by 20s for larger vehicles, especially since you've got more turnaround room, that probably wouldn't be a bad thing.
Okay. Yeah, we can look into restriping those to be a larger parking since we, we definitely have the space for them.
Because some of these people have these huge SUVs and that would give them a parking spot they're more comfortable with and eliminate, you know, interfere, you know, any vehicle interference because you've got plenty of turnaround room there too, which is really good. So that might be a good, a good thing, so.
What's the distance from that crosswalk near Main Street to the entrance down the bottom there, that new crosswalk? That seems awfully close to the road to have the crosswalks be on the outside of the speed bumps, no?
Yeah, we had a little bit of concern with that. We just weren't sure how else to do it. Either way, it's not going to be the safest. We could move the crosswalk up to be in the middle of the speed bump. I guess that, that would help because it would slow the cars down before they.
It almost feels like the, it almost feels like the crosswalks and the speed bumps need to be swapped.
Yeah.
Right? You need the speed bumps first and then crosswalks. I don't know if that's.
I think, I'm hearing Bill's right a lot on that. I think you, you create a problem if people are in the crosswalk and people are, it's a 28, it's really busy. And if you end up having someone that has to stop as they're pulling into the, into the plaza, that could back up somebody behind them and put them right out into the, into 28. And um, if, if it's acceptable, Mr. Chair, I can show a video from when I, I went there last week just to check it out. And it just shows the, the normal traffic pattern. I, I think some of the things Dan went through here will help, but um, if, if Danielle, I can show it, I can.
Sure. Did you want to screen share?
One video and I'll, I'll throw it up, you know? You know, I took a bunch, but just one video.
Um, let me just make sure you can screen share. Okay, good.
You guys see that?
Yeah, I see us.
Okay, hang on. Sorry. Try it again.
Oh, there it is.
Alright.
Press play.
Yeah, I gotta actually redo it. Hang on. I'll just back it up. Let it go. Alright, so I'm, I'm at, I'm just inside. Come on. It's going a little slower.
Maybe click on the video itself.
And uh, maybe, maybe it's whatever. Okay, I, I'll just open it again. It'll just open up. So here comes car and notice the curb on the north side is like 30 feet in, like the curb cut. It's literally in alignment with the first couple parking spaces. So like, we're not seeing any cars pulling that way. But if you pull then, you pull in like on the other side of the, of the speed bump. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty striking, like how bad it is. But you know, all I'm, I'm saying is this is just for letting everyone know. But if you, if you have, that's the speed bump. If you have a crosswalk back here, look how many people are trying to pull in and someone's in the way. You're, this car has to slow down and be right in the path of traffic. You know? The police haven't even looked at this. I, I, there's no way this would be a good move, putting that crosswalk there. Yeah.
Is it possible to consider making that an exit only? And that would eliminate a lot of issues. I mean, it's, it would, everybody could still enter the plaza. I don't think anybody's not going to come to the store because they have to go to the lights. If they want to go to Brunt, they're going to go to Brunt.
I think that would have to go to MASTY OT for.
Would have to go higher than that.
Yeah, they could go with the highway, even that curb that is really, you know, so if Dan wants to put it back up, but even that curb cut, it's not anything that really Brunt can do about that. That's like, you'd have to get like a, you know, a highway, you'd have to put a permit in with, with the DOT. To change that curb cut. And they, they're going around, like, there's no question if DOT was redoing this lot or if someone took the time, they would definitely pinch that opening. They're doing that everywhere. In all my projects, there's, they're closing down the openings because they're too big and that makes them unsafe because people pull in at a higher rate of speed. So um, but this, this is what it is. But I do think personally, Mr. Chair, I do think the, the um, the stops going across would definitely stop anyone from, you know, traveling across else they're going to get a rude surprise. But I, I agree with Bill, like that first crosswalk, I think is just too, too far east that it will just be a problem for people pulling in, just for everybody. So I think it needs to move. The other one is probably fine, you know? But the, I think we need to, you know, why not just put it, I know you have this other, you know, call it speed bump that goes east to west, you know? But, and so people trying to, that alignment with your entry on the, on the east and the bottom there. Dan is, is obviously like, it's right, yeah, it's kind of in a weird spot, but it seems like even if you moved all the crosswalk all the way up to where that speed bump and then just put the speed bump on the other side of it. Like what I mean is we're, we're getting all worked up about, and, and you can see the video. The speed bump, that, that first speed bump too is, doesn't even go across. It's about five feet shy of hitting that, that one that goes east, east to west. It stops. So people kind of go around it too. So um, you, you know, what's, you know, might as well just put in a, put in a new one anyways, you know? It doesn't even go all the way across, so.
So Dave, what do you think? And move that, move that crosswalk up to about where that speed bump is?
Yeah, and then, you know.
I mean, even if you put it just below that speed bump, you know, because it's going to be painted, it's color, it tells people that people are going to walk across there and but of course, the only problem is you'd have to, on the east-west berm, you'd have to cut a, a place of the sidewalk to go through, you know?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, now they gotta step over the berm to get to the sidewalk.
Let's see, I think um, just double checking. I thought that was already open. Oh no, the speed bump does go across.
Now, didn't you say they were going to repave the whole lot? Wasn't that something that got brought up last meeting that they were going to repave that whole lot?
Uh, I believe it was just a mill and topco and restriping. Uh, the landlord, Kevin, Kevin Vargas on the call right now.
That's correct. It is a resurface and restripe of the lot if we need to.
Does that include new speed bumps? Like the whole lot's going to get ripped up and new speed bumps laid down?
The, we definitely have to fix the ones that are there. So yes, that's included and, and many modifications that we need to, that come out of this.
Yeah. So it's, it's a good time to relocate those speed bumps a little bit if need be, since they're going to be replaced anyways.
My only ask is that we would be able to do that kind of more towards the spring, just so we can get through the winter and beat it up with any plows rather than put anything new and rip it up. You know, Brunt being there, we kind of want their facade to be fresh for at least, you know, 15 plus years for us, so uh, and for the town. So if there's, you know, an extension that could be put on the actual, you know, work itself towards, you know, when the temperatures rise in the spring or, or late, late winter, whatever it is, you know, we'll, we'll attack it whenever we can.
Um, Mr. Chair, through you. Kevin, are you, I, I don't have a, I don't, personally don't have a problem with that. I understand, obviously the plants aren't open, all that stuff, but are you going to stop or put in the wheel stops though, at least so there's no through traffic?
I have no prob, no problem with that. We can either sleeve them in or key them in, um, at that point, you know, it'd probably either be easier to sleeve them in, leave them, redo what we need to, at least in the main drive aisle that's going in both directions there, uh, and then restripe everything needed, at least on the, you know, around the building and throughout the remainder of the lot itself as well as hatching as well.
So you, you're going to, so if you're going to repave it, you'd have to pull all the wheel stops up, right?
If they're in sleeves, we'd be able to pull them all.
And then pave around it and then drop them back?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Um, Kevin, how you doing? Jeff Griffin here. I got a quick question for you.
Definitely, Jeff.
Hey bud. Um, so where the wheel stops are, right? Um, we had talked about um, and that's great because I, I don't want to see the parking lot turn into a big mess either, you know what I mean? Where those wheel stops are, uh, would it, and, and I'm just throwing this out there because what we, what we're trying to do is we're trying to deter like that. It, it, and that, thank you for the video, Dave. That was great. That's just a small sample of what really goes on. But my question to you is whether, because, because people are going to pull in there, they're going to see the wheel stops, they're going to be backing out, they're going to be going around until they all get used to it, right?
Yeah.
And to avoid that, um, and, and I don't know what you guys think, but maybe, I just had an idea. Um, do you have, Kevin, a plan to like, where is your employee parking going to be?
Uh, Kevin, Kevin's with Land.
Yeah, as far as us. I hope I do not have any employees there, but um, Jeff, to, to your comment, you know, looking at, um, you know, as well as David's comment as well, and the curvature, at least if you're, you know, coming from say, plan east to, to west is, you know, if there's even an additional stripe or something that we needed to do from the inside, you know, the tangent of the radius all the way to with, you know, the point where, you know, that additional sign will come in and the ballard, you know, some sort of hatching there or some sort of, you know, parking, where, you know, identifier, a line that identifies it as well, you know? Uh, whatever we can do to help identify the fact that, hey, this is your way in, you know, it's a bit different than it used to and that's on purpose.
Right. And, I think probably the, the paint, the painted stripe directing people is a, is a good plan. It's, you know, wide enough, something wide enough to be, to really get people's attention that says, you know, don't, don't, don't try to cut through here, you know, you know, so that's, I think that's.
We have 102 properties. We've gotten pretty good at it.
Nothing else, I think that's a good, that's a good start.
So, so I'm sorry, Dan, to you. Um, where those like say three spots are, like the very first three spots uh, closest to Main Street. Yep, right in there. I've seen, I've seen in some parking lots where they will, and I get it, you're going to have the, the small bumpers on the ground and all that. But I've also seen like what they, where they'll put a sign that'll come up and say like employee parking. You know what I mean? Or something like that. So like that would totally be a deterrent because they'd be, they'd pull right in, they'd see the first three that would say employee parking or four, whatever you did, um, for, for Brunt. And then it would automatically, one, it would give them an eye view of, of something in their way. And two, I think to stop like the traffic and all that uh, turning around and, you know, everything else that could uh, happen in that space because of the bumpers on the ground. I just think that that might be a really cheap way to get people to say, hey, I'm not going in there. That's more of a hassle than going straight over the speed bumps, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I agree with you on that one, Jeff.
Yeah.
Just looking at this, though, I have another question, though. I'm just, I'm just looking at it and listening to what Jeff is saying here and I'm thinking, wait a minute, on those low parking lots, if they back out and then they go around, there's, there's a speed bump there, they'd have to drive over that speed bump in order to get, in order to get into the travel lane. Uh, if they're trying to go out, that's tight, you know, a tight turn.
Yeah, that's true too. Yeah. Unless, um, and I'm just going to throw this out there, on the, um, the, uh, the right side of this sketch, um, plan, like the last, the last one or two of those bumpers, if you leave those out.
Yeah.
Only because it's just another way out. The parking spots can be the parking spots, you know? And, and I get that, but just as a way out, um, uh, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing some ideas out. I just.
Well, I mean, they got so many parking spots. Jeff, they got so many parking spots that your, your idea would work. I mean, I mean, it's not like it would, it's not like you're going to take away parking spots that they need.
I'm just saying.
If it was a restaurant, we'd need them, but not as retail.
Yeah.
I hope so. I mean, but the, the thing is, I think that if you threw those signs up in there and you opened up the backside of that lot, I think I, you're probably, other than that speed bump issue, I don't know, I'd say it looked pretty good.
That, that and you know, the fresh, you know, fresh tar, the fresh paint on the ground, I think is going to, you know, liven it up to hopefully catch everyone's attention. Hopefully the culprits as well.
I think too, um, Kevin, that I noticed when I was out there that everything is, um, you know, yellow, safety yellow. And, and really, I don't know, Danielle can maybe speak to our standards, but I think you know, the lot striping and the parking striping really should be white and restricted or, you know, safety type areas like the speed bumps or whatever should be the, the safety yellow.
Safety yellow.
Um, and everything's all, everything in the entire lot's yellow right now. Speed bumps, the, the non-speed bump, you know, the striping like for, in my opinion, like the big oversized speed bump thing should be white along with the striping. And then the, the, uh, the speed bumps themselves should be safety yellow and the crosswalks perhaps, but a lot of times crosswalks are white. But there just seems to, that will help a little bit, I think. With just people understanding like this is, you're going through kind of a safety area, you know?
David, totally, totally understand. To be honest with you, the whole thing's getting restripped, repainted, redone, so. As long as it's not hot pink, we're good.
Yeah, I know. I was looking at, well, I was looking at it and it, it was, it was actually, some of it's worn out, but some of it looks really new, you know, too. So that's why it wasn't like uniformly hard to see a parking spot. The lot of the paint uh, was pretty.
Yeah, the, 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 the turn here, I think it was back in 2013 or 17 is, uh, it was a DOT project to make it um, a multi-left out possibility here was not previously available.
Okay.
So.
So again, what, for, for Mr. Chair, I'm just asking, so what, what are we committing to doing? So again, what for for Mr. Mr. Chair, feel, I'm just asking, so what, what are we committing to doing, you know, for the opening so that we're definitely making this place safe? Again, this, and I want to apologize to Brunt because you guys are this is success story. You've got um, you know, a great story. You're going into this building. And so I don't want to come down on you either, Kevin. But like, the problem is, it's not your problem, this this thoroughfare here. It's just the way that the parcel is and the entrance is and.
Yeah, you inherited it.
We're just trying to help. Yeah. And I know Kevin is, sounds like especially since he's on this, in this meeting, he's willing to. But that's, I just want to make sure Brunt understands, like, not trying to get in the way of you, the success of your new store. I just want to make this like, this is our only shot to get it right for a while. So and then we're going to hear it. If there is a problem, you know, they're going to all look to this body here and why do you let them do that, you know?
Let me see if I can, let me see if I can encapsulate what we're talking about doing. Starting at the bottom, we're going to paint the stripe line there to direct so people will realize that that's that's a parking area, not a drive-through area. Um, we're going to move that um, crosswalk up so that um, so that it's far enough away from the entrance and not create a hazard. We're going to, on on the parking areas, we're going to take a, just maybe take, take two, take parking spots out on each one. Is that it?
Yeah, I'm to you, I I feel like that'd be beneficial just to have that drive lane always open and.
Yeah.
We don't really.
So is it, we're going to lose two spots or one spot?
It'd be four on each one, eight total. But again, I, it's not like we're taking them away, guys. Like, so if if Kevin, if you need, or if Brunt needs the spots, we revisit it, like, we totally understand. Like, I just think it's a good way to start it out, maybe, and then.
Okay. But Dave, what do, are we, are we just taking one eight foot or are we taking two eight foot?
I think you're going to do more than that. The eight's like too narrow if there's a car park right there.
So two of them, so so he's going to take two spots out there. So that will be, that'll be more than enough.
So it's four and four, it's eight total.
Yeah, you're going to lose eight.
Well, I meant, I meant, you know, two one.
Yeah, I get, I get what you mean. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
So yeah, so those and that, and the same thing at the top. And that will be the extent of it. Does everybody agree with those, that analysis?
Yeah. That that helps with your plowing too, because now your plows don't have to back out and potentially get hit when cars coming in.
Up here, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bill.
And the final thing. Final thing, which I'm I'm not going to, I don't think I necessarily want to make it a condition because, but to make 10 by 20 spots up here, there's going to be a lot of people that come with these vehicles that are going to be really happy with you. And you know, these contractors that buy these kind of clothes, they buy, they drive big trucks. Give them a place to park.
Yeah, I drive big trucks, though.
Majority, how's that? Majority of the lot on the east side is is through the mass electric easement. So doing a whole lot is is pretty limited through there. So if this is the best we can accommodate, you know, we're happy to do it.
Yeah. Well, that's 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 not too many things that definitely improves the whole thing. Is anybody more going to make any changes to that analysis?
No, I think it looks good.
All right, all right, yeah. I think we've made some headway.
Warren, did you um, did you mention the um, the, did you mention still wanting to move the speed bump um, once the parking lot is repaved?
Well, you know, the speed bumps, um, I don't know that there's a problem with it. I think the only thing we were going to move is that crosswalk.
Just the crosswalk.
The speed bumps are where they are and I I don't, you know, they're going to, if you think we should move them, they're going to probably take them out and put them back in. But for now, I think they'll find where they are.
Yeah, it just needs to be the the one that's east or south.
Advertised. I think the sign is going to be important and moving that crosswalk up and painting it up. So they see that there's a walkway, that'll slow them down. And then go, a combination of these things will improve. It's not, it's not perfect because it's too late for perfect. But uh, but it will, but it at least improve the use of that whole parking area, I think, and make it, make it safer.
But for the spring, they should complete the full, you know, all the way across, the one on the south, left to right. It does not go all the way to the right. It's about five feet short of hitting that vertical uh, speed bump there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they can maybe fix that temporarily, so.
Yeah, they don't have to even do it temporarily. I I get it.
Okay, because any motion that, any motion we make is going to be, is going to have as possible, but it's going to be the changes that we asked for tonight. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, um, I think anything else? And I, and again, like Dave said, I'm sorry about this, but but this, this has been a problem ever since. And you guys just kind of inherited it. We appreciate you helping us fix it as best we can.
No problem.
Right? All right, any, anything else?
They look good. I can't, I can't wait for this to open.
All right, um, Danielle, we we do not have a motion.
I can put one in the chat, actually, um, if that's helpful.
Yeah, well, if you want to just kind of voice a motion and let um, one of the other guys say so moved.
Sure. Um, I moved that the CPC vote to approve the site plan titled Brunt Workwear, North Reading, at 70 Main Street, dated September 19th, 2025, and last revised, I, can you, do you guys? The last revision date, I know there's a different date on every page.
Uh, technically, 12, 12/01 was the latest package every December.
Okay, um, dated September 19th, 2025, and last revised December 1st, 2025, as amended this evening.
Still moved.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Yep, okay, all right. I have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And again, I want to thank you guys for working with us. You know, I I think we'll make this, it may be that after a little while, if it's, if it turns out to be a problem, you will have the opportunity to make some changes yourself, you know. But I think we, well, the few things that we've done here, we've improved the safety of it. And uh, and and again, the the people that go there commonly, they're going to get used to the new arrangement and that'll, that'll help also.
They they're going to have to also lose their bumper or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our parts. They're in the hard life.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm looking forward to you, we're really looking forward to you having your situation there. But actually, before I go any further there, I should have closed the public hearing and asked if there was anybody had any questions. But um, or any comments, I think, uh, um. So does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on it? Okay, so that's all set. So that I will officially close the public hearing and we have the vote, so.
I think Jeff uh, started to allude to it. Do we have to acknowledge that John is uh, not part of, part of the vote because he's not here? Does that have to be acknowledged?
On, right.
John?
Is he on? I can't see him.
On. John didn't hear the, didn't hear the content of the meeting, but John is on.
Okay, so let's go back. Okay, um, uh, he didn't hear the content of the meeting, so.
I'll keep it easy, Warren. Yeah, I signed him for the last five minutes and uh, I will officially abstain from the vote.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
All right, so our vote will stand then? Is that okay, Danielle?
I'm sorry?
Is our vote, can our vote stand or do we need to revote?
Did you vote, did John vote?
No, he did not.
Okay, then no, that's fine. Yeah, okay, that is fine.
I didn't, I didn't call on him, though. I did not call on him and allow him to abstain.
If you prefer, I mean, you could just do the vote again, just to make it cleaner.
Okay, Bill, is your uh, your motion still stand? You made the motion, right, are you?
Aye.
Okay, okay, and uh, now wait a minute, who made the motion?
Danielle and I moved it.
Danielle made the motion and who's, who?
I seconded it.
Dave made the motion.
Yeah, Dave, I moved it, so I made the motion, yeah.
Okay, so Dave made the motion, Bill seconded. Okay, now I'm going to do another roll call vote. So it's that with Dave. Dave, you're an aye.
Aye, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. And um, Bill?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
And John?
If you can hear me, I I only caught the last five minutes of the presentation, so I'm going to officially abstain.
Okay, fine. We can hear you just fine. And I'm my, and I am aye. So that's four in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. And that's the vote, okay?
Yeah, good.
Dan, can I ask you to send me the marked up, or if you wanted to make it a more formal marked up copy? Um, usually what what the board will do is after the approval, um, we'll just get a clean copy showing any changes that were made to the plan. And they endorse that. So if you can, um, and that doesn't hold anything else up, you can still proceed with all your other permits. But if you can just get me the um, the, a copy of the plan that shows all the changes made and then they'll be given the opportunity to um, to just sign it as the final plan.
Okay, Danielle, so you might also have somebody uh, maybe go through the the minutes of this meeting and get that synopsis that I did of all the changes and printed, give them a copy of it.
Yeah, so actually, I was noting that down. If you don't mind, I'll just read it off so that we have everything. Paint striped lines uh, to direct traffic to parking area from Route 28. Move crosswalk up so it's farther from entrance, not creating a hazard. Remove uh, four parking spaces from each of the parking rows um, in the far parking lot, eight total spaces. When the lot is repaved and painted, paint the stripe, the parking spaces and crosswalks white rather than yellow. Um, and in the spring, um, also, um, at that time, we would revisit moving the speed bump. I don't know if we decided on that it needed to be moved or just the crosswalk moved. I think they said it didn't need to be moved.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
No, we don't need to do the uh, we don't need to move the speed bump.
Okay.
I mean, that may, that may be something that they decide to do when they repave and that's questioned, but for now, um, they can stay the way they are, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one question for Kevin. We all take off on this one.
Yeah.
Kevin, quick question. Um, have you ever, has our case centers ever thought about putting other businesses in the very large amount of Walmart parking space that's empty and never gets used? Have you guys ever put like a small strip mall or some other businesses in that area?
The the main challenge is is honestly septic. We're so limited by our ability to do much of anything. Um, you know, former Joe Fish, Brunt, we're super obviously excited for Brunt. The opportunity of the building sat there for a bit of time. The restaurant use was was a challenge. Um, Walmart is continuing the expansion that they've been chasing for a decade. And, you know, things have become a bit more official within the past, you know, six months. They do have a pre-application hearing, actually, uh, meeting tomorrow, actually, with Lydia, so we join in that as well. So yeah, uh, we'd like to do a bit, the easement with, you know, mass electric kind of chews up a lot of that opportunity. And then, you know, the icing on the cake is is definitely the septic.
Yeah, yeah. We got some sewer down that street, that'll help.
You make that happen, we'll make anything happen, I promise.
I know, I know.
But thank you guys very much. Appreciate everybody. Danielle, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all set? Okay, um.
Happy holidays, everyone.
That's all we have for, that's all we have for tonight. So um, unless any comments or questions, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Okay, then I'll adjourn the meeting. Chairman's prerogative. Thank you very much. Thanks, guys, for coming tonight and getting.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Having you guys here, so thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Have a go.
Yeah, bye.
Sorry, Mr. Guys, have a good night.
Good night.
Yeah, that's fine, John.
Bye, John.